First thing is Badger Boy and Girl State.
Why don't you share a little bit with us about Badger Boy and Girl State this year?
My name is Carson Bakken. I was chosen to be the Badger Boy State Representative this year. It's a program of incoming seniors that go to Ripon College and they establish a state, county, and city government. So there's about 900 boys there from everywhere in the state. There's a lot of good things about it. You can go into discussions about topics ranging from political theory to neurology. You can run, you know, challenge yourself to give a speech in front of people. That's something I'm not very good at, so that's what I do. Yeah, and you can run for state or you can run for office. So I was elected state senator for my city. And you get to meet a whole lot of new people from across the state. So I met a person from Phelps, Wisconsin, which is near the UP, and I also met somebody from Darnington. So it's a really nice program and it meant a lot to me that I was chosen. And thank you.
You have to shake your hand. Thanks for joining us tonight representing Mineral Point. Would you like to welcome the TRAP team? And Mr. Howard, would you like to share a little bit about your season and some of the individual accomplishments?
Yes. This year, we started out 24 kids on our team. Went up for, what, nine last year? Twenty-four. We ended up with 21 students shooting this year. Twenty of us shot at state. Out of 71 teams, we got fifth. Kids had a great year. We had some good sponsors this year. We're gonna try to up it next year. Brady and three other students went to Nationals this weekend in Michigan, and he's gonna tell you how they shot out there.
Okay, so, yeah.
Brady's our president of the TRAP team.
Yeah, so myself, Brody Lee, Brayden Abney, and Jacob Mullers went to Nationals. And we did pretty well. I missed the cutoff for finals by one shot. Brayden was the only one to advance, and he represented Mineral Point very well, shooting a 195 out of 200. And we're looking forward to going back next year. Brayden got 41st in the nation on 14 hundred catches.
Congratulations on a great season. Amazing accomplishment. I had a chance to shoot with the team, not nearly as well as they shot, but it's great to see you at action, so congratulations. And next, our qualifying baseball team. I assume they're our spokesperson today?
I'm the same.
Tell us a little bit about your season highlights.
Well, our season started off thinking that it was gonna be a better year than past. We had a bunch of returning freshmen that came, and we had some upperclassmen that about to lead the team a little better than previous years. And we had a good time of coming together as a team, and after winning some games and being so close to winning conference, we thought like, wow, we actually had a chance at competing with a bunch of other guys and other teams in the state. So we go into regionals, we play Parkview. We knew they were a decent team, but we thought we could get past them and go to the team that we lost to, the second game of the season, Schelsberg Benton. And since we lost that first game, we had to travel to Schelsberg Benton instead of having them at home. And it was a great game. The first night, we got there and started warmups and everything, and all of a sudden the storm came through and we had to postpone till the next day, so we had to go all the way home and go all the way back the next day. And we finally beat them in extra innings in the ninth inning with Isaac, I think, hitting a double and Bosco bringing him in. So it was a great, great team effort there. And we went on to play up in McCross and played two double headers there against two great teams. First off, Wisconsin Heights, and Owen had the MVP hit of the game, the bottom of the sixth inning with two outs, and brought two of us around to get the go-ahead run. So that was very exciting and just so glad for us, because we all wanted to play another game on that super-nice field, infield turf. So then we got to go to state and just had a great time there, a great experience on the nice field up there in Appleton. And everybody had a great time on the bands up, and nice to stay overnight. It was just a great team effort all the way through, and we just appreciate all the supporters and everybody that came up to the games and just watching us the whole way through. So we appreciate you guys for that.
Kirk forgot to mention the gem he threw in the sectional finals against Prairie Dejean. He pitched very well. I don't think that we'd have done the same with anyone else on the mound.
Okay, we need an appointment for CISA III delegate. Does anybody want to volunteer?
The date that Angie, you went through this last time, I know you've got the, Angie, the paperwork is at the 26th of July.
I don't have it right now. It's coming up very soon.
Actually, we should back up. Do you want to throw all the names, please?
Basty.
Yes.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dunn.
Here.
Ben Long.
Here.
Lindsay.
Stop this.
Here.
So going back to CISA III delegate, anybody want to volunteer for that?
It's the 26th.
26th is our first name.
Put down document, Lindsay, since he's not here.
If it's the 26th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Somebody want to make a motion that Angie is determined delegate?
Motion.
I will check on that for certain.
Okay, thank you. No. Killers, please. Okay, motion carried. Let's go into the parole of minutes. Motion, please.
Make a motion.
Second. Say it. Discuss. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, this is where I should bring this. Okay. On behalf of fellow board members at this time, I would like to invite any member of the audience to stand with comments about items of interest or concern that do not, that do or do not appear on our agenda this evening. Please begin by stating your name and address. Would be appreciated if you would look into comments. We will be timing this. You officially get three minutes. I'm gonna set the timer for five. We ask that you remember that Wisconsin law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. Thank you for your support of our district. I have two people that want to speak. Do you want to speak now or do you want to speak later? Amanda?
All right, it's up to you. It's about the elementary position, so if you'd like it later on, I'm more than happy to speak later.
Actually, let's just have you go for it right now.
Okay. Who do you think? My name's Amanda Tucker. I live in Mineral Point. I'm giving my specific address. Dear Mineral Point School Board, we understand, School Board, we're making decisions tonight that directly impact the children at our elementary school. We have written this letter collectively as parents of children within the Mineral Point School District in an effort to ensure we are providing you with community feedback. We know the board wants to be fiscally responsible, but we think there are ways to accomplish this that are not at the expense of our children and their learning. We would like to share our support for filling both the fifth grade teaching and library media specialist position at the elementary school while also maintaining the preferred lower class size that will ultimately benefit student learning. The lower some reasons, key reasons for our support. Many of us moved to Mineral Point or stay in this community because our school values small class sizes and puts our children and their education first. This is why we are proud to be members of this community. Adequately staffing classroom teachers who work directly with our students should be the district's number-one priority, as they are the ones educating our children and preparing them for the future. There are a lot of different skill levels and abilities within a classroom, and having too many students in a class can make it too difficult for one-on-one and small group instruction with one teacher. It is also hard to keep kids challenged and engaged when they are waiting for a long time, waiting a long time for teacher support. Increased class sizes breaches school board policy. By not filling the fifth grade teaching position, our class sizes will exceed the board previously agreed upon, which is 20 students for grades four through six. At the school board, at the last school board meeting, some board members suggested reducing kindergarten to two teachers and reallocating a teacher to the library media specialist position, which would again exceed class size policy, which is approximately 15 students for grades pre-K through third. The library media specialist position is also a very important position. The library media specialist not only supports our district's efforts to increase literacy, but also teaches children important technology skills to use in the classroom and in everyday life. Learning to use technology is such a critical skill in today's world and is supported by the school's vision statement as well as the district's strategic plan. Just last August, when faced with very similar scenario and number of students, 45, the board voted six to zero in support of hiring a classroom teacher to support three sections of first grade. Rather than cut and rehire and take away entire year of learning when a child's brains are developing the most, let's also provide the opportunity for the kindergarten class to stay in three sections. Three sections will allow the children to be nurtured while their little brains develop, learn, and grow. These jobs were already included, I'd also like to mention that these jobs are already included in the recently approved budget. We are asking you to please support our children and their education here at Mineral Point by maintaining the three sections of kindergarten and fifth grade and hiring a library media specialist. Our teachers and the positions they hold are the most valuable resource to lead, teach, and inspire our kids as they move into the world. Sincerely concerned parents, and in less than 24 hours, I have 121 parents who collectively prepared this letter for you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Jill McGuire.
Hi, I'm Jill, and I teach kindergarten here and live on the football field. No, just kidding. I just wanted to start out by saying good luck to Luke. Thank you for your service to our district and good luck in the future. Secondly, I wanted to publicly support Mitch as our choice in the interim or permanently. Mitch has worked in all capacities of principal in our district. I know he hasn't been our superintendent. Obviously, it would be a new position for anyone. So, but Mitch has come all the way down to the elementary school, being our summer school supervisor. He's very respectful to students, teachers, and parents all the way around, so I think I just wanted to publicly say my support for him. Thirdly, of course, I am here mostly about three sections of each grade level, and I really think that Mineral Point has something special going on, and we've had a few years of up and down in kindergarten, and it's been difficult. We tough through it and don't say much about it, but we've had a little bit higher class sizes even with three this past year. And there are, there are days where I go home and I feel a little bit guilty that you don't always get to that one that you really needed, maybe something extra that day. And so I just am in big support of keeping three classes at each grade level, and I think our kids deserve that, and I think our, our past scores and things have, have really shown that when we have that support, it's definitely there. And lastly, the library media. We definitely use that room on a daily basis. The teacher comes to us and she's available in the room, but she also does a lot of advisory to teachers. So there are a lot of things maybe behind the scenes that are not even really known how she is used and after-school in services and things. So I think, you know, there are just all kinds of points there, but I just wanted to be in support of all those positions, and I want to thank you as the board, because I know you do a hard job, and those are the tough things that we don't have to worry about. We know what our little, you know, classroom budget is, and we know what we need to get, we need to get accomplished by the end of the year, and we do, we work our tails off to do all of that, but we know you guys are mighty, you know, a little bit unthanked. So thank you for all you do for us, and I know you'll make the right decisions in the long run. Thank you.
Well, both ladies stayed right in three minutes. Anybody else want to speak that did not sign up? Okay, we're gonna move on.
I'd like to speak if it's okay. I'm Jenny Wally, and I teach Spanish at the high school, and we do have Mr. Veeje, Mr. Van Galen, who also teaches seventh grade Spanish exploratory. But last week, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I was able to watch the video of your school board meeting looking for information about a superintendent search and what you would like for from the community and staff. Is this the appropriate time to address it?
Yep.
Sure? Okay, great. I know in the meeting that it was discussed that it's not legal to require someone to live within the district. But I really think the superintendent should be an invested, a person who's invested in our district. And I'm not saying this because I think Luke isn't, but I think that when you live in the district, you have less of a tearing of, you know, Luke was from Middleton, he's got his kids' activities in Middleton. I think it's really tough to try at the end of the day of a long workday, go one way or the other. And I think that our person should be invested in our district. Two reasons. I would hope that our future superintendent would be here for at least three, four, is what I heard last week, is the average. More than that. I mean, I'm kind of old. My superintendent was like at the school from kindergarten all the way through when I graduated. That was kind of the norm then. I don't want to see our school be a stepping stone for someone to go to a larger district. I want someone to be invested in the sense that they are present and that they are available to students. I would like to see the superintendent who attends student activities such as concert plays, sporting events, and things. I hear stuff back from parents and kids all the time, can ask your own kids about, oh yeah, we saw you at the game, or we saw you at the play, thanks so much for coming. They really, it really means a lot to them, and I think that someone who lives within the district or pretty close would be able to attend a lot of these things. I know that because I'm mainly at middle school and high school, I see Mitch and Vicki at a ton of things, and I know that parents and students really appreciate their time. Second, I think a superintendent should be able to budget successfully. There'll always be surprise expenses that pop up. Ask any homeowner, car owner, et cetera, that's life. Our high school staff was asked to cut our classroom budgets, which we did, and later that year, when we had about two months left of school, we were told that we had gone from over $100,000 to something around $43,000, I'm not sure of the exact numbers. And that was really kind of a big surprise at the end of the school year. We've got things that have to happen. We have science budgets where you have to buy specimens and things like that, band budgets. I mean, I don't have to, me personally, I don't need the money, because I can figure out other ways, but there are classes that actually need certain things to be purchased. Number three, I think that Luke, you've done a great job leading us in the PLC process, and I would like to see that continue. I would also like to see a superintendent who understands the singleton aspect of PLC, for those of you who aren't familiar with that. So mainly, I think it's the high school. We have myself, foreign language, art, band, A. Help me out. Technology.
Business.
Business, thank you. And we all teach, we're all just a single teacher, and so for us to work together collaboratively with other people, we have to go outside the district. So that's been great. We've started that with, Luke started that, Mitch has been supporting that as well. I work with Riverdale. We kind of do the telepresence thing next year, kind of every other year we've done that. I would like to see them understand how with singleton classes, and again, mainly at the high school, this is a big thing, that they understand how difficult it is and that we really need to network out. CISA has been a great resource. You know, honestly, Facebook has like, for me, Spanish teachers in the US, and you know, we collaborate, hey, how do you teach, what's a good assessment for preterite in this? I mean, it sounds so stupid, because Facebook is so goofy, you know, and horrible, it can be horrible, but they're, they're close groups, and we can use those as resources as singletons, and not just sitting there on Facebook, like, 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 but there's actually, and you know, Mitch has been great. I said, okay, just don't mind me thinking on Facebook, come over here and look. I'm actually, you know, see how this is so neat, and there's a lot of groups out there. But I think that it's important for our superintendent, our future superintendent, to understand that. And Luke has been great in that, and I would like to see that continue as well. Okay?
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to just quickly, sorry. First of all, I have to apologize, I work at a concession stand, so I smell like a hot dog. I'm Kristen Saber. I just want to dovetail off of what Jill and Jenny both said, and I'm speaking today as not only a taxpayer at Mineral Point, but a parent who moved my children to this community from Chicago, and we could have gone, I'm from Darnington, my husband's from Piba City, and we were trying to pick between the three, and this was the best decision I ever made. And it's because of these teachers sitting here, and I have nieces and nephews that are still here, so I guess what I'm trying to say, I appreciate everything Luke did. I loved coming here because he was a driver and a pusher and like a vision, he had the vision. And what I, I guess I'm in support also of, I don't know why you'd want to look anywhere else than somebody who's qualified and who loves this community and has as much pride in it as we do and listens to every single thing we say. As a coach, you know, I'm coming from an athletic background. Mitch is the kind of guy, like, it's gonna be sad for me if he is the superintendent, just because he's such an amazing principal. Like, I've worked at five different high schools, the best, the best. And, but yet, I know as a superintendent, he's gonna take care of all of us still, and his heart is huge. He listens to us, he's right in the trenches, he is, you know, if we have meltdowns, he, okay, we can do this, which I have them. But I, I would feel, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I cannot walk out of here without giving my support to that man, because he would do anything for us, anything. And he truly is here for the kids and the teachers and the community, so.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
All right, all right.
I passed up board communications. Anybody on the board have something they want to bring up?
I did have a couple outside of the issues that have been discussed, a couple different contacts were made just about our closed sessions and making sure we are communicating what we're going in there for and just, there's some, we need to doubt, I guess, about whether or not we're staying within the realm of what we say we are going in there for. I guess the clock has was born, the video, I'm not sure about whether we took an hour to discuss what to pay for Jiffy State, stuff like that, so just something for us to be aware of and maybe monitor each other on that in our closed session.
Okay, anybody else?
So I'm confused, what's the concern?
That we are going mad at ourselves. Reason for being in a closed session is the concern that was addressed to me.
Firstly, I don't think we have a problem, because as far as I can remember in the three that I've been in charge of, it has been exactly what we went in for. If I'm wrong, I guess I'm wrong. So, anybody else have anything? Okay, let's go to the food service report.
Would you welcome Lisa back to Mineral Point? Thank you for coming. Nancy is with us most days, so thank you, Nancy.
Well, thank you for inviting us. Well, let me just kind of quick, it seems like there's a lot of topics, and I'm Lisa Correio. I think I know most of you, a couple of you are in our division since our actual representation. Tonight, we're just gonna go through our, I'm the district manager with Harvard, who actually was in charge of our, was and is in charge of Mineral Point. And Nancy Smith is our food service director, who is here and manages the operations on a daily basis. What we're passing out right now is just what we call a blueprint scrapbook of the highlights of what's gone on in Mineral Point in food service this year. And so you can just pass that around, we present that, a copy of that to the board every year, so we're doing that right now at this point in time. So some, some of the highlights, well, first of all, we'll just go through the average meals per day. So we just handed out this chart here, and I've got a three-year trend of what our participation has been over the last three years. And this, this past year, we've actually seen an increase in kids that are approved for free eating, which is great. It actually, you know, previously, it went from 74% up to 86% of the kids that are approved for free meals are eating, as well as the reduced. So that's, that's helped the overall percentage increase on school lunch. Breakfast is up minimally, about 1%, so that's good to see. And the percentages are based on average daily attendance, so the kids are here on a normal basis. So overall, our participation with breakfast, lunch, and meal equivalent, which is catering, alacard, vending, those are other resources that actually pool into the program. With all of those meals and meal equivalents, we're at about 91% overall participation in the program for breakfast, lunch, and meal equivalent. So really happy to see that that's increased by 1% and a half from the previous year. And so, I'll look at that. And then down below is just basically what our average alacard sales went down slightly from the previous year, and however, overall, revenue per day is, is actually increased from the previous year. Again, more free, more kids that are, the federal reimbursement rates for free reduced lunch helps that when we get, we capture more kids that are food better eating. So that's something that, that has been healthy. We actually, you know, breakfast is always, always a hot point, breakfast participation. We're about at the average state percentage of 10%. Wisconsin, however, is the lowest in the, in the country for breakfast participation. You know, that's something that the state has always wanted us to help, you know, improve that, that overall percentage within our schools. We introduced a nutrition break, which helps at the middle school and high school, it's a passing time, and we have a quick, round, little breakfast for them to take. However, we do have a lot of kids that like to eat more components than a meal, so even though we educate them, they really like to have one of this or one of that, and so that flows into the alacard sales. So overall, the participation is solid, and we're really happy about that. And then some of the highlights this year, I know we spoke to the board in October, we, at that time, we had already done the farm-to-school apples from Oakwood Fruit Farm, and we'll continue that this year. Limited-time offers are something that the company has been doing for a couple of years now, is we send out a recipe, some marketing materials, even a video on how to do it for the middle school and high school level, and it's something that's a little, that's different than what we would normally actually offer on the menu, and so that's been very well-received this year. We don't require our directors to do them every single one, but usually about 60% of them we want them to do, and again, it depends on our operation. Nancy does do a lot of cooking and helps support the cooking aspects throughout the day as well. And we do a harvest of the month sampling. This past year, Nancy It actually, you know, previously, it went from 74% up to 86% of the kids that are approved for free meals are eating, as well as the reduced. So that's, that's helped the overall percentage increase on school lunch. Breakfast is up minimally, about 1%, so that's good to see. And the percentages are based on average daily attendance, so the kids are here on a normal basis. So overall, our participation with breakfast, lunch, and meal equivalent, which is catering, alacard, vending, those are other resources that actually pool into the program. With all of those meals and meal equivalents, we're at about 91% overall participation in the program for breakfast, lunch, and meal equivalent. So really happy to see that that's increased by 1% and a half from the previous year. And so, I'll look at that. And then down below is just basically what our average alacard sales went down slightly from the previous year, and however, overall, revenue per day is, is actually increased from the previous year. Again, more kids that are, the federal reimbursement rates for free reduced lunch helps that when we get, we capture more kids that are food better eating. So that's something that, that has been healthy. We actually, you know, breakfast is always, always a hot point, breakfast participation. We're about at the average state percentage of 10%. Wisconsin, however, is the lowest in the, in the country for breakfast participation. You know, that's something that the state has always wanted us to help, you know, improve that, that overall percentage within our schools. We introduced a nutrition break, which helps at the middle school and high school, it's a passing time, and we have a quick, round, little breakfast for them to take. However, we do have a lot of kids that like to eat more components than a meal. So even though we educate them, they really like to have one of this or one of that, and so that flows into the alacard sales. So overall, the participation is, is solid, and we're really happy about that. And then some of the highlights this year, I know we spoke to the board in October, we, at that time, we had already done the farm-to-school apples from Oakwood Fruit Farm, and we'll continue that this year. Limited-time offers are something that the company has been doing for a couple of years now, is we send out a recipe, some marketing materials, even a video on how to do it for the middle school and high school level, and that's something that's a little, that's different than what we would normally actually offer on the menu, and so that's been very well received this year. We don't require our directors to do them every single month, but usually about 60% of them, we want them to do, and again, it depends on our operation. Nancy does do a lot of cooking, and helps support the cooking aspects throughout the day as well. And we do Harvest of the Month sampling. This past year, Nancy did the honey with cornbread in October at the elementary school, on the times in December, and May goes. And so what that looks like is, we set up a table in the cafeteria, and we have all the kids come up and try, not just kids that are participating in the school lunch program. We want to introduce some new and different things for them to try. So that was, that was, anything else I forgot on that one? And then, also, when she has an opportunity to integrate the Harvest of the Month items on a fruit and vegetable bar with a salad or something, she'll do that as well, to keep that moving. One of the, one of the accomplishments that we really had for the program last year, and we did achieve that, this spring, is Kids in the Kitchen Cooking Class. And so that was pretty exciting. It happened at the end of the, I think in May, and the kids really, really enjoyed that. So our goal is to do it three times, fall, winter, spring. And, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, the first day we did it was, the weather was at the, so that's why it went to me. Kids loved it, they listened, you know, they liked learning about measuring, we had enough helpers, had cookette, she helped, and we came out with that end product. So we kind of ran into a problem with making a crust from scratch, so we had one already made, but they were able to cut up their things and put their pizzas together, and with however, or how much ever they wanted, so they were really creative. And it's fourth grade, which is a good age, you know, the time, because you know, fifth grade is moving up, and they're always doing something, but they really seemed to enjoy it. They did, I do believe, four students for each class, two girls and two boys.
And that's kind of holiday on the next year. Yeah, that's fine. A lot of times, when we do Kids in the Kitchen classes, and we send out an announcement to parents, it's the first 20 kids that are there with their slips, and a lot of times, in a lot of our districts, we have to, you know, they have to wait for the next class, so it's pretty, they get pretty excited.
Yeah, we did a drawing, and then, you know, the next time, they will be able to, you know, put their name in, but somebody knew what.
So in the fall, one of the key things that was pretty exciting was learning how to make an apple pie. So, because we learned how to make an apple pie with crust, we cut the apples, we rolled the crust, and then brings the pie home right before Thanksgiving to mom and dad to share, and that's what they even shared. So that would be our October, November-ish class that we'll, we'll do. Some things that are going on this next year, in 1819, we have a wonderful three-year DPI state audit coming up, so that's coming around the corner again, so that's always a stressful time of year, just to, not, just to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the, the things that we have to do. We do have an audit team from corporate that actually helps the district office prepare for that, because there's things that the district office has to do, and then there's operationally things that the director of operations has to do. So that support will be there this year again. We also will continue the LTOs, Harvest of the Month, expand the Kids in the Kitchen Cooking Program, and then would, it is our goal to get a chef here, a chef does it once or twice, to do a display cooked item at the middle school and high school, so we'll, we'll accomplish that as well. And then it's also our bid year next year, so every five years, we're required by federal law, the district is required by federal law to go through the bid process, and so that, next year is also our bid year here for food service. And typically, with the new format comes out to districts, usually around January, and then we'll help, you know, with that process, but normally, that would happen in the spring. So kind of a big year next year, so. So, but we'll tackle it with positive attitude and a lot of energy, and, and keep moving forward. Want to say thank you to your support, and when we got the email, a couple, my, so good luck in your new adventure, and, yeah, I really appreciate your support, and the district offices.
Really working, really supporting our program, really liked it.
Yeah, especially when you came, you know, coming to eat, a lot of times, administration don't, they don't participate or come and eat lunch, but Luke was there, and a lot of, you know, well, a lot of, a lot of teachers eat, so we really appreciate that. And any feedback that you can give us, because if there's something that we're not doing and you'd like us to, we'll communicate with us, and we'll, we'll make it happen, you know, if we can, so. Any questions?
What's the actual federal reimbursement for free meal?
For free, $3.20.
And what about the reduced?
A dollar seventy-nine. And that will go up in July, but then reimbursement rates are not altered right at this point for 1819.
Anybody else have any questions?
Were we, prior to the field, we hadn't left this year?
That hasn't been fully finalized yet, because we had a systematic problem with the SEW system, so we're still, that holding hasn't been, we're looking like we were, but anyway, we, whatever our guarantee was, we will actually honor that regardless, so. When we know. Why don't I go spend the hope that by Wednesday? Yeah, so. But whatever the guarantee is, it does, you know, it will be whatever it's, so, yeah.
Thank you for your job, it's well done, and a great partnership. Appreciate seeing you again, and looking forward to what we begin next year.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
And there's some nephews' water, you could get thirsty.
The kitchen was their place, all these people.
Okay, let's move into the WASB Business Audit, quickly, please.
Yeah, so I emailed everybody sometime in June, and just asked that you get thinking, it's the time of year again where the Wisconsin Association of School Boards is accepting nominations for its annual business audit. Each district may nominate up to five businesses, you don't have to nominate any, but you can choose one to five, that have been helpful to the success of its schools, and this is not a competition. So each business nominated has its name listed in the State Education Convention Program in Milwaukee in January, as well as on Flosby's website, and in an upcoming issue of its magazine. And then we send certificates, they get sent here to the school, and we invite the businesses in and just do a nice thank you for their support of our district. So the nomination deadline is August 24th, which means this doesn't have to be done tonight, but if you did come with any list of businesses, I'd be willing to have the board decide that tonight, or we can wait till the August 11th, or whatever.
We'll wait till August. Now, let's move on into the elementary staffing report.
This is on the agenda for later action, but the board requested just a following of the, the events that have led to where we are today. We do have the accepted resignation of Carrie Cabot in the library position. The person that was filling her position, Jenny Singer, requested and was selected to move to the fifth-grade teaching position. Upon that, the board then subsequently didn't approve rehiring of a vacant library position. Then we received a resignation from Katie Hughes, who's a kindergarten teacher. Carmen McDonald expressed interest from third grade to move to kindergarten, and was selected to make that move. And then in turn, Judy Bash, fifth-grade teacher, was requested and selected to move to the third-grade position to fill Carmen's vacancy. So that leaves at this current time, a fifth-grade position that is now posted. There are, there are applicants that have inquired about this position, but before moving forward with the hiring process, we make a recommendation to the board, and they decide whether we commence forward with hiring or not.
Okay. So let's move into items for action, elementary school building plan.
Before you have some documents, that, some are old, some are new, the addition and remodel breakdown was based on the survey percentages and the level of support for both those that have kids in the district and those that do not, the construction costs and the running total for a possible remodeling of the elementary building, related additions. That is roughly an $11.9 million project. Additionally, you have a mill rate analysis, we did a threshold of what the community would tolerate. We looked at the mill rate going forward, it would be on average from $11.92 million per annum, roughly at $2.09 on an average home, a median value of $150,000. That is actually a difference of just $1.29 over this year's current mill rate. So you wouldn't feel the forward impact of the 209, because there will be a decrease in our mill rate going forward to next year. So the net impact that would be felt by the community would be roughly $1.29 in the first year, $1.24 in the second year, and $1.21 in the third year, with analysis beyond that for those that want to look further into the future. The report, all funds, that unfortunately did not load, the formulas from the spreadsheet did not carry over to the PDF, but you will be able to capture much of that information in the form of questions about if we did a recurring referendum, that was the other piece that the board had looked at, what was the mill rate impact? We did three different scenarios. The first scenario was looking at an impact of a revenue limit override or exceeding the revenue limit by amount of $350,000. That has an average annual impact of 86 cents on the mill rate. Translating that to a monthly, a median home income of 150, a median house value of $150,000, that would be $10.75 a month, or $129 annually, a $150,000 home, to have a revenue question, or I'm sorry, a referendum question to override the revenue limit by $350,000. The board also inquired about if we were to increase by $500,000 and by a million for operations. Again, these are all recurring questions. Overall, for a $500,000 recurring referendum, monthly cost $15.38, annual cost at $184.50. The mill rate would be $1.23. If the board wishes to move forward with a $1 million revenue limit exemption through a recurring referendum, monthly $30.75, annually $369, the mill rate impact is $2.46. And that would be, again, above and beyond a, a bond question for remodeling the school. So that is new information for the board, we did do that, worked with our financial bond council. Lastly, for the board, is loaded a draft of question one and question two, that is for your review. The first is to exceed for a purpose of paying the cost of improving the elementary building with related code, maintenance ADA issues, renovating the existing elementary parking, plus lane and stormwater improvements, a secure lobby office and classroom addition, gym and physical education spaces, to the amount of $11,920,000. The second question is a resolution that is in draft form that allows you to exceed the revenue limit for state statutes by an amount determined by the board. Right now, the draft just says $500,000 as a starting point, you can move that any way you want, and it would start at the 1920 school year and be every year thereafter. Just one piece on the recurring referendum before I turn over to discussion is, the recurring referendum would be just be giving the board the authority to raise the revenue limit by that amount. Every year, the board would actually have to take action as to whether they're going to exercise that authority. So it is only the, the ability of the board to increase operations on the tax levy by $500,000, but that would need to take action annually, or it will be part of the budget, the annual budget meeting. With that, I will answer any questions, but this is an opportunity for the board to discuss any of the resolutions, the mill rate analysis, bond council's information. Kevin from FEH is here to answer any structural questions, any questions with regards to the projects and its pricing and so forth.
My first question is, why would a almost $12 million referendum only raise our mill rate by 209? And if we do a million dollar, it's $2.46. It doesn't make, it doesn't make sense. Seems out of whack.
I think it's $29,000, because you're going to each year. Where's the other ones?
The bottom question is, yeah, thank you, I wasn't understanding. The bottom question is amortized over the 20-year period, so you divide that into basically one twentieth of the total amount, and expect those payments all over time for the recurring referendum is annually, and recurs before the board authorizes.
Anybody else have any comments?
So, I mean, the action that needs to be taken tonight, or that could be taken tonight is approving either, is approving either draft for the school remodel, plus a recurring refer, or recurring referendum.
Correct.
To be finalized at the August meeting.
Yeah, I would suggest the board take those in two separate questions as a form of motion. This would advance it to a final consideration in August, and then the board would act on that as a final consideration. If the board were to prove in August, then it would be a binding resolution that we put forward, a question, a referendum question in November. And that would meet the proper timelines that we would need for postings and so forth to make sure that everyone's clearly notified of the referendum question that would be imminent. So again, this is in draft form, it has the opportunity for you to, to work with the numbers inside of what the final resolution might be. That August vote would be the one that would actually carry into a possible November referendum.
So we're trying to get a November referendum, is there any monetary gain by having it done by then? Are, are there numbers?
There's not really a monetary gain, the interest rates and so forth are uncertain as we get further into the future, we're not sure what it looks like compared to November. I think the only other piece that the board needs to consider is that you can only now, as new state law, go to referendum one time per calendar year. So if you go in November, you can still go in April or November of next year. If you go in April of next year, you would not be able to go until post-January the following year.
So, I'm just being, you know, double advocate, but are there, is there a state thing that we haven't got any money, if we just do it by a certain time, number of matching, the energy savings and that, is there a cutoff for that?
Yeah, there is a matching dollar month that's coming in for the school safety grant, is that maybe what you're?
No, that was, it was the energy part.
The energy efficiency part. So this doesn't have any energy efficiency built into it, it's just a straight bond question for remodeling. They have limited the ability to, to do any modeling for, for energy efficiency purposes.
So that stopped?
That did stop, yes.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't mean that energy efficiency won't still be built into the project, it'll be...
No, no, we just won't have that, we don't get any money from the state for that.
Right. You'll still be aided on the expenditure of the $11 million, $11.92 million, because that's an expenditure, it will become an aided expenditure, and it will still then lessen the, the overall amount that the community will pay for that project. The state will support that in some way.
I forget what the name, what was the name of that program? What was the name of that program?
Performance Country, I think, Act 32.
Was that part of it?
It could be, yeah.
More than, the state's. Thank you.
Personally, I will not support any, either, either of the referendum questions that we have tonight. The building referendum, I think, again, in my opinion, if we push too fast, the evidence of final design, we talked about the baseball field, the stadium, and the going access through the current football field, where's it going, where's it going to be, that baseball field, there's been discussion on administrative offices down there, the gym, with the, with the uncertainty of our superintendent, and the direction the board decides to go there, if we decide to go with a $12 million project, we need to have somebody on board that knows what they're doing, that, that can handle a referendum of that size. The, the operating referendum question, with, apparently, we're getting $160,000 this year to add to our, to our fund, our general fund, that's really, to me, kind of takes away some of the concern of operation funding this year, and we probably will add surplus this year.
Can you speak to that a little bit more, Luke, as far as how, how about your situation has changed in the last few weeks?
Yeah, there have been a few developments that have happened over the past few weeks. We did know that with the not rehiring the position for the library, but that was a savings to the district of roughly $66,000. Through additional savings, when we did new hires compared to salaries that left and new salaries coming in, and the benefits that are related, it puts us roughly at $100,000 in available surplus right now, that can be used to do one of many things, which the board can talk about later. The other piece that came to light just recently is the city of Mineral Point is closing out their tax incremental fund, or TIF fund, and that puts a one-time lump sum payment into the district. That payment will be made roughly in October or November, roughly $160,000, and once received, that can be used as other revenue for purposes that the board determines.
Just to clarify, Luke, I'm sorry, so the, the net salary savings benefit that totals about 100K, that includes cutting the library media specialist's position?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
And was that total, 66 was total package?
I believe that was salary benefits, yes. Total compensation. Total compensation.
Can you remind everyone through the room just how much, I mean, do, how much we cut from staff budgets to balance the budget?
Yeah, we were down close to just a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars that needed to be reduced from our budgets in order to have a balanced budget at the preliminary level. Knowing that there are a lot of things still in flux, one of the solutions that was offered was using fund balance, but instead the board corrected us to actually balance it by making those reductions.
Sure.
So they came across multiple areas, removing the capital maintenance fund entirely, reducing athletics were some of the key pieces that were of concern. And we have other needs and adds and wants that didn't get added in as part of our strategic plan that were just tabled because of the lack of funding.
Okay. So the amount of those cuts was a little over a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Memory serves, yeah.
Yeah, the memory serves correctly, yeah. It was kind of a moving target because things continue to evolve, and they will continue to evolve as we look at enrollment numbers in the fall, coming in, and open enrollment and so forth. But, yeah, it's, there was roughly about a hundred thousand dollars that we had to come up with.
So if we, so given this budget here, if we rehired the one-point-o FTE as the library media specialist position, we'd have about one-ninety left in the budget, and, or the savings out of two-sixty, you know, we have about one-ninety-plus left, and then we put all the staff resources back in the budget, at about one-ten, we'd still be at an eighty-something surplus for this year?
Yeah, that'd be correct.
And then there would be the stuff that we just tabled, or maybe hoped to be budgeted, kind of a wish list that just didn't get put in.
Right. The only piece to keep in mind is that TIF is a one-time payment, it's not recurring.
Right.
So if you try to offset a salary and benefit of a person, per se, you'll have to figure out how to, to come up with those funds in future years because of that payment going each year through the first year.
Right.
Is the TIF going away, Luke, in, in community? Is that something that the city council and the district...
That is my understanding. It wasn't part of any of those conversations directly. Andy, you sent on the board...
You were here on the board.
It was, they met last Thursday and I couldn't go. They have dissolved the TIF, and that's why they're paying...
Who has dissolved it?
The TIF Board of Review, which is then the...
Is it state or city, or?
City.
City, okay. Do you want to give us the acronym for that, so anyone knows?
Tax Incremental Fund.
Thanks.
Wasn't the TIF set up to attract business, Andy?
It was, and it was, it was dissolved, I think, because it was at its, last year, if I recall, there was a year left on it.
Also it was scheduled...
And I think they could extend it, but it was, it was, to my recollection, scheduled to be at its maturity this year. So they could then, if they chose to start a tax increment, incremental district, and create the fund.
I've always been with the impression that a TIF district is smart planning for community. And I was a little surprised to see that it was...
Yeah, I know last year when it came up, there was mixed feelings on it, based on some things that happened in year one and year two of twenty years.
Yeah, the...
I mean, there's, from what I've got, there's money left.
I'm just curious, maybe you don't have any answer to the question, but if they decide to go create another TIF district, would, would that pay this money back to them?
No, this, that would create a new, a new fund, so that perhaps in twenty years we would get another.
Okay. Because all I hear is, is we don't, they don't have any commercial interest in Mineral Point, and they take, they take away one of the good bargaining programs, and we don't have...
Yeah, and it may, and it may pull us to communicate with as partners, build the, the city and share our thoughts, and, you know, that would help us, if we were able to attract more business.
So, to be, to your, to your point, Luke, we, we should be well within budget this year with these new changes, even if we rehire the library media specialist position. But next year, we may have the same structural deficit that we were dealing with at the beginning of this year.
Correct.
Okay. And potentially, sharing that information with the community, knowing that we might end up having to make these, we might get out of these tough cuts this year, but we might end up having to make the tough cuts next year and not be so lucky with a...
Right.
...one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar bonus check in the old summer.
Yeah.
So, with, with informing the community of that, it may be helpful to say, hey, if we want to keep the status quo currently funded, we may need a recurring referendum to support that moving forward. And, so basically, putting, putting our current budget to the community, saying, do we want to continue to support the community at this, to support the school at this level?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a correct summary of assessment of what might be happening? Okay.
When the board took action earlier on, on these two questions, the building referendum question passed by one vote. I'm not sure how it would pass again tonight, but if, if the school wants a good chance of a successful referendum, it's going to take more than one board member to vote to do that. But yeah, in my opinion...
You're saying it, it should have more of a majority's support from the board?
It should be unanimous.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
If you're all right. I mean, if it was a one-million-dollar question to add on the entrance or whatever...
Right.
Totally, it's a, it's a service thing, but twelve million dollars to Mineral Point to the...
One of the board's discussion, too, is if the twelve million, eleven, eleven-nine-two is too much, there is a running total that you could look to save, but we still believe we have code maintenance and ADA items that need to be addressed, and that line item is at two-point-one million. And there might be some subset of that that you still want to consider if it's not the full amount. And the question might be, at what point would you exit off of that ramp and say, we, we believe that we need to do the maintenance and ADA, we believe we need to renovate and update, but we're not sure we need to do the parking bus lane, or anti-gym, or those kinds of things. So it doesn't necessarily need to be an all or nothing, and that's another point for the board to consider.
We discussed that. We discussed that at one point, and I think we argued what we, what we could support.
This is an opportunity from our last meeting to this meeting for the community to, to come to the meeting with the resolution, the draft resolution being published, to share their, their support for or against those resolutions. The final resolution isn't until August, so again, you may not be getting feedback because is it three-fifty, five-hundred, or a million for operating, and what is the actual mill rate on adding that? We know what that is now, and so now if people have an opportunity to, to see and discuss and give feedback on the convention final decision-making in August, as to whether you go forward with a question at all, or if you go forward with a modified question, I see this as an opportunity for the board to put one final, kind of bringing it down another level of tightness to what is the actual question that would be asked in August, hoping to solicit the community for feedback on whether they can support that or not.
Well, I just, I mean, I totally get Larry's points. I just feel like it's time to capitalize on the momentum of this project. I feel like a lot of community members have invested in researching this issue. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the school needs. We've been hearing a lot of complaints, you know, at least ever since, you know, I started getting involved with, with being interested in the school board and being a parent, they're talking about how parking is bad, how the gym is too small, how, you know, the classroom walls are cracking, you know, and so I think the community is ready to do something. And I would say that, you know, this is not the time to kick the can down another year and just try to piecemeal it. I think there's momentum now for community support for this idea. We have a survey that supports that. We've got community pride in the fact that we're number two in the state, and they want to, I'm feeling a groundswell of support for how well our district is doing. And, I mean, I'll just say, you know, if we, if we, if we shoot for the sky and go for this Fullmonti, you know, referendum with everything together, and it fails, then, you know, then maybe we come back and say, okay, clearly the community didn't want to pay twelve million for this project, they've ordered it down, so now what do we do, right? Do we go back in April and say, okay, let's just do the two-million-dollar code referendum? Do we do another survey and, and punt it to next November and say, do we do a seven-million-dollar little compromise? You know, I think that's where I see us if the referendum loses. And I think the same thing should go for the recurring referendum. I say we, we capitalize on some momentum here with how well the district's doing, and, and, you know, ask for support for this current budget so that we don't have to make huge cuts and talk about cutting teacher positions. And if the community says, yes, you know, you're doing a great job, we'll fund it, then great. If they don't, then I'm going to have a lot more, you know, feedback from that to say, hey, you know, we got to deal with what we got here, you know, because the recurring referendum failed, so we got to deal with what we're dealing with. And I'm going to feel a lot more comfortable having to make really tough cuts, because we, we put out the community and it got to put right back to us, right? So we're stuck, now we got to make hard cuts, and I'm sorry, you know, this is what, this referendum failed, you know, what can I tell you? So I, I feel like now we go, and we, I think the question is now, you know, how, how big is the recurring referendum? Is it five-hundred? Is it smaller? Is it bigger? You know, I, I would take some advice on that, but those are my thoughts on moving both these referenda forward. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to move forward the resolution on the school remodel.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Luke, what is the cost of the referendum?
To actually run a referendum?
Yeah.
When it's in conjunction with the election, such as the November election, the actual cost to the district is negligible because they, you just have to help by, do we even pay to print ballots? I don't think so. Then we just have to give them the language.
There is a D.
There is a D, okay. It's minimal, and then we don't have to staff the polling places and so forth, as that's taken care of as part of the city function. There will be printing costs for materials that are informational only to inform the public about what is on the ballot and what's included with it.
It's free, okay.
But it would not include any promotional, yes, or no material.
Can we find out?
To provide a review in the background.
Pardon?
And/or April, there's not special cuts.
Yeah, in April, it depends if there's a primary or not, and what would be on the April ballot.
Would there be a board election?
Yeah.
If nothing else.
Well, certainly the biggest board turnout you would have would be most likely midterm November, you're expecting, and that's what you want, is the representation of the community to come out in the, in the election, more so than, how would be your April?
Would you just going to get us a little question, what are the costs, because it's probably, so it's not like a one-time fee?
Okay.
What's printed and how many, or what a...
Set-up fee, there is a...
Oh, a set-up fee, okay.
Certain costs to the district.
Okay.
Can you call a question, please?
And this is for...
Question one, basically.
Done?
Yes.
Dunlop?
No.
Stennis?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basty?
Yes.
Can you, can you talk a little bit more about with the recurring referendum, just from your experience in the budget over the last several years, and given how long it's been since we started last referendum for operations, what was passed, was it five years, something like that? What would you advise is, you know, we don't ask for too much, but we don't want to be coming back every year asking for any either.
Yeah, as we approached this year, the very first budget scenario that we gave before was a deficit of three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. Some things happened prior to the final number, and will continue to happen, just like the TIF, for example. They'll continue to move these numbers around, but if we wanted to, in the budget process, maintain the services and the level of resources that we had currently, we would have need to, to apply three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. That is, I think, a sign of where we were almost a decade ago, when we started to slip, where simply the expenditures were outpacing the revenues from the state, being that they're capped. And I think that the district is moving into a very similar scenario where the expenditures are fixed, we know that our transportation contract, for example, will need to be renegotiated in the very near future. With the loss of Pepatonic as a partner to that, there's going to be a significant increase to transportation costs, and there's no way around it. And we have no additional revenue to offset that increase. That's just one of many increases. We've been very fortunate to have a zero percent increase three out of four years in health insurance, but that is not sustainable forever. And as these increases start to hit, they're going to get us upside down in a hurry. We're, we're doing nothing else but just maintaining the same level of bandwidth on our transportation, just a couple of quicks on it, so.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
How much do we lose to vouchers every year?
There is a number out there that is, I want to say roughly, it's changed, but in the sixty-thousand-dollar range, goes off to the voucher program in the scene, right off the top of our rules, before we even get into our budgeting process.
And I think that the public should be aware that we lose a lot of money to vouchers.
No.
And, and that's, that's really important to know that. And if, if that continues, then, then you take a hit, you take a hit every year. And that, that'll be an important question coming river to river.
If I were to make a recommendation, it would be to go forward with what you need. In my opinion, is the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will give us two to four more years out, and a lot of this is dependent on us to do by annual budgets. But I would rather see strategically the board come back to the community in small increments rather than wait for it to balloon to be a one-point-one million and we have drastic or deploying cuts if, if something doesn't pass. So that would be a strategy that was deployed by Blue River Valley, went almost an identical scenario to us over a decade. They went back for three or four different, smaller referendums rather than one large referendum. And that would be my recommendation, is to, to look at the three-fifty number. To Jeff's point at the last meeting, the five-hundred number buys you a little more time, because the other strategy is I don't want to come back to the community every three to five years or so and, and ask again, I just got done asking. And that's, that's okay, too, which also brings in the question, why not just go for a million, and that we're done with it for a decade, and we don't have to ask for operations again, and we only authorize the board what we need year to year. So even though you have the borrowing authority for a million, you only levy for the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and the following year it might be the four-hundred, or four-fifty, or five-hundred, until you get to that cap again. So those are all different strategies. They all have, I think, pros and cons. You know, it'll really be up to the board to decide whether or not go next.
What, what was the mill rate on the, like, plate management, the referendum?
Two-oh-nine. The net over this year would be one-twenty-nine.
So the baseline would start at eleven?
So right now, it's eleven, it's twelve-oh-nine, next year it's projected to be eleven-twenty-nine. If you add the two-oh-nine, it would be thirteen-thirty-eight, or a dollar twenty-nine for where it is currently.
And a three-fifty per year would add fifty-six cents.
Correct. Correct.
So before the board gets all excited about how cheap it sounds, our mill rate would be over $14. So we should probably do a comparable with our area districts before we just throw off these really negligent votes. $14.
Well, like I said, Larry, I mean...
I...
You make a fantastic point. And I think that, and I'm well aware of this, this is an expensive endeavor. And running a school is expensive. I mean, and the question is, you know, how much is it worth to make these tough cuts? You know, and so I guess what I'm saying is, I know we wanna compare other districts, but we are number two in the state. And Mineral Point is not every other town. It is not every other community. I'm not saying we're the wealthiest community. I'm not saying that. But this is a special town that has special pride in its school. And I'm saying, put it to the test. So if they vote down the referendum because of this, it's too much of a mill rate, I get it. You know, message received.
The special town part, I agree with you all day long. I've been here all my life. I know. But at some point, we gotta be careful with that mill rate because this is only part of it. And then you take the city, you understand, building a new police station and garage. And so that gets gradually down there. And then a fire truck, and that gets gradually down there. Everything else, and you need our citizens to be able to stay in their houses, too.
I'm not saying that everybody's not gonna move out, but you just gotta be aware and sensitive to the mill rate.
And I still think like there was before because I find it interesting that, and the board has changed, but we were given bells and whistles before for this project and it got verified. But there's still a silent majority out there that that number is too much. I'm not against... I'm not against, you know, some remodeling and perhaps some new construction, but I'm not for the 12 million. I don't think our tax base can handle that. And I've said that before. I said I would agree to a 7.5 hundred. And that's being over a 10-year period. That was reasonable. That's being fiscally responsible instead of all the bells and whistles. Because I think education, how we're going to... How's children in education is going to change. It's gonna change before we know it. And I think people are not realistic to that.
What about the recurring referendum for an operational budget? Do you feel like there's... Do you feel like there's permanent cuts we can make long-term?
No, I don't.
That keep us from being able to ask for more money?
And I think that we've really have done a good service for not, you know, for operations because, you know, that's what gets cut. And operations is what kills a business. Because you want to... You need paid teachers. You need stuff for students. But the operations, you know...
Yeah. So what I'm getting from you is the sentiment you're feeling from the community is that they don't want this big school remodel, but maybe they'll support an operations referendum. And, you know, let that play itself out. You know, like I said, I mean, if the school remodel gets voted down, but this community votes for an operational referendum...
I don't even think it should be played out. I don't think that that 12 million dollar referendum should even be played out. I think we're being very fiscally irresponsible. So that's all the same.
Well, if that vote's over...
I would not argue with you. I only voted to send this down another month because now the public's gonna be completely aware that this is where we're headed. But personally, there is no way that I can support a $12 million referendum. So that's the only reason it took me so long to vote because I'm not... I'm one person. But if the public tells me they want us to spend $12 million, then I guess we spend $12 million.
Well, you supported it.
I supported it till next month because we have one more month before and I won't be going... I won't be voting for it next month.
So next month, you're not...
Unless I get completely...
Feedback?
Bam with feedback that tells me differently, then I'll go to a referendum.
Because my opinion would be is I can't say losing a silent majority because they're silent. We created a process to attempt to get everybody a voice. So until we know, we don't know. I mean, maybe that's true. Okay? But we won't know until we ask the question.
You can use that example before, though.
I understand.
My fear is that the $12 million will pass and then the operation won't. And we can't hardly operate what we have at this point. And we tack $12 million onto our budget and then we don't get that to go through. The room won't have just 100 people in here. There'll be 500 people complaining when we start eliminating the number of teaching positions. And I hope that Doc's right, that it's...
We're not gonna know until we ask, right? Amy's right. This silent majority is silent, you know? And I'll tell you, I have... We have two sets of objective data that suggested that voices are not silent. One is, we have the survey, which gave us majority support for the remodel project. So that, to me, that suggests it has a good chance of passing. Maybe it won't, you know? Maybe the silent majority will rise up and vote against it. And that's fine. That lets me know that I didn't see anything coming, even though we put out a survey to the community. Second thing is, the recent school board election, there was a political platform on the ballot that was basically based on reducing administration, shrinking the budget, arming all teachers. And that political platform lost almost three to one at the poll. So what that tells me is that the community wants this district kept going forward. So I'd like to give the community a chance to back that up.
So what you're saying is that the community is saying that we can afford this?
Possibly. We'll see. If the community can't afford this and they decide as a majority can't, then they'll hold this down. And I'm fine with that, really. But...
Did you read all the surveys?
Yeah. Yeah, I read a lot. I mean, the comments were mixed. So somebody want to make a motion for the second question?
On which number are we thinking? Do we're gonna wait for that for months, too? Because that's a lot. I mean, it's over $500 a month if we don't have $500,000 tax increase. It's a lot.
A year.
Up to here.
Yeah, a year.
Up to.
Up to. So, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, 350 will only buy you two or three years if you're lucky.
And that's still at 400, just under 400. Or sorry, $450 a year.
Can we do a motion? Just I feel we're missing a few communities in what meetings. We should have this many people here from the community. And we're explaining the idea of this operational referendum, what it means, when will we need the money? And if we don't need the money next year, we don't... We don't need you. That's usually not the case. I... Correct me if I'm wrong. We got the 1.1 we've obviously put in the map every single year.
But the difference being that the 1.1 was to fill the existing structural deficit. So we were propelling that forward. We're already upside down at 1.1, where the 350 is extending the life of the district rather than filling the hole that already exists.
I think we want the 1.1. I wish we were showing 200,000 dollars every year.
We didn't build in anything extra for anything new. We didn't add any staffing. We didn't add any new line items to the budget. So I think it... The previous referendum had an $800,000 hole that was filled. And when that fell off, because it was not recurring, it ballooned up to the 1.1. So it didn't buy us anything. It just filled the existing hole that had.
And so I'm a bit confused. So when you say operations, are you saying the maintenance? Or... That's different than staffing than what the students need.
Correct. And it would actually be all of that. So anything that comes in that general fund, salaries, benefits, contracted services, dues and fees.
Can that be separated? Because I think what we really let go are the buildings and the maintenance of the buildings. And that's what I'm... I mean, that's what I'm concerned about. I think that that part is gonna... That's gonna, you know, if we don't keep it up, especially, we're not keeping up this building.
Yeah. So you could write the question to be specifically for the purpose of maintenance and capital improvements. So the 350 would be recurring annually to that purpose.
And the public needs to know all of that separately.
I agree with you 100%, but it's still... It doesn't matter if it's the maintenance or it's being able to pay our teachers. That's still all part of the operation. And...
But our maintenance has not been what Gil Kelly... We should look into that, come up with what we have done in the last five, six, seven years as far as both buildings are gonna have new roads on. I mean, that's two of the big ticket items off the top of my head, in excess of $800, $900, wouldn't you say, Luke?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the biggest change that wasn't here seven years ago is the technology and the environment that our kids are learning in now. And those devices have a shelf life and they need to be replaced. The smart boards, when I came in, not every classroom had one. We were using pep funds to buy one or two every year until we got to the point where every classroom had a standardized display. And those are the things that now, seven years later, are wearing out and need replacement. But there was never a budget then nor now to actually do that replacement. So...
But that's not capital maintenance, like Kelly's referring to.
Right. It's replacement equipment. Yeah. So, you know, the idea is that all of this is operations. You buy new equipment or replacing existing equipment, fixing buildings, school safety and security.
This is all good.
I'm waiting for a motion. I remember I didn't have anything.
I was trying to determine whether I had a motion.
You call it.
This is just to move forward to August, correct?
Yeah.
I will make a motion. I'm gonna move question two forward to August. The $350,000 is the number one.
What was that?
Any other discussion?
Would anybody like to see a different number? Would that on your mind?
Do you have the number?
No. Disgusting.
Personally, I don't want to be changing in August.
500 is what they insured.
I don't think it really...
It just really does depend. I think what it helps the community is to see where the board is at. And then they can react to 350 as acceptable or it's too much. Or they'd rather see a 500 than 350. So it gives you a starting point that this is what's coming back in August and will be potentially approved by the board unless we give feedback. So I think you put your best foot forward in saying this is what we're planning to go forward with in August. We need your feedback. And hearing something both pro or against will drive that forward decision-making. And then once August is approved or not, that's what goes forward.
I would have support in this motion, just so everybody knows. During the night, during the August meeting, if we can get that building cost down to a manageable number, I'm not saying I won't support any referendum now. The idea of not having super temp on board or a new one does make me a little nervous because there's a lot of work involved when you take the referendum.
I agree with Larry. I think that that needs full support and some of the... It's kind of too big of a question.
And it's all about timing and strategic. If you want it to be successful. And the worst thing you could do, Doc, is take to the community a $12 million referendum when truly that's really what we need. And I mean, we don't get it. That's doing the community a disservice. Not saying that's what we need, but if I just had to say it. So you want to give it your best shot when you put something?
I agree. I agree. I mean, we kind of explored a lower price for the remodel and the response I got from all the advisors was that every part of the remodel kind of ties into the next one, you know? And we didn't even talk about the baseball field either, you know? So we didn't even...
And by who do you mean by whom?
Well, by FEH and the planning committee members. You know, I wasn't convinced that we could do a piecemeal version of this in a safe, effective way that would last, you know, maybe they would last several decades.
Well, I think if we would have said do a 7.5 million, that it would have gone back to the space planning committee and they would have had to resolve that. So you didn't get that from them because they didn't have to resolve that.
And I think that's a fair point. And I feel like the community tried to keep it as... Tried to meet the goals other than what was desired to be done as economically as possible. But, you know, to your point, Kelly, I think if we put a price limit back to them, you know, and forced it on them. I just feel like... I feel like the time to do that is if the full project fails. That's my sense. But we've already moved on to that. So we're voting on the referendum. Okay. And we're going to call a question for the...
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Gun law? No. Stennis?
No.
Basty?
Yes.
Look, if you have a mill rate of 12, your last recurring and the effect of the referendum ever.
Sure.
If you had it, yeah.
It's 2010 of a mill rate and a remiss fault. And in our annual report, we go back 10 years. But that's really easy to see.
It's on the website.
Okay, let's move on to handbooks. We have one thing here, amendment to... It was
a... Add it wasn't at the board packet. It was in the Word of Tribe version. It's the amendment to the professional services agreement, which is the contract for the roof. This would add the office remodel design and construction. Again, Kevin is here. If you have any questions with regards to the amendment, the project in question is the secured entrance at the middle school and high school.
Can this be put off until June of next year?
I don't know how you grant.
Pardon?
Isn't part of this being part of that?
Yeah, we have it refunded by the grant.
Well, I have an issue with that evidently our office staff was never conferred. And they've looked at this and it's like they were in shock. And you want to start this tomorrow and you can't guarantee that it's gonna be up and functional before school even starts. I can't imagine what our office staff is supposed to be trying to get everything ready to have the kids come. Am I misunderstood?
Yes. I do request to receive feedback from office staff.
Because I've got a number and they're telling me they didn't.
Did they see plans?
Just a rough schematic. Yes. It wasn't the final plans.
Is there a final plan out there? I haven't seen a final plan, Larry.
We have.
If we have, it has to be concluded by the end of next summer, in the summer of 2019. I look at it. Still at 130,000.
It's 147.
Yeah.
$15,000.
$15,000. Well, this is really all the same in the office staff, opinions and the layout and everything. Everyone is impacted by the planned layout and will share. We see that and we see some feedback and share that with Christine at the time. She will get some of those changes.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a much construction, this is really construction drawing. To be a pretty picture. This is the existing layout of the office with the main entrance right here in the office. This is a this is the deconstruction plant. So I think shown dash is being removed. And then this is the the new plan. I think it's in yellow, that area is being removed. So one of the key components is to create the ability to come into the vestibule and not get into the school without going through the office. That's pretty standard design for school entries nowadays. So a small vestibule component is constructed on this door. So it should be able to.
Can you hear him? Can you hear him?
No, Kelly, you must be hung.
Okay. I've been yelling at kids for the last two days. That boy's got summer camp, so I'm fast my voice. So we're basically expanding the vestibule. One of the four doors. We're creating an extended vestibule so that we can create a door into the office space. So if anybody comes into the vestibule, we allow them into the vestibule. It's locked to be able to get any further. If they can't go into the school without going through reception during the regular school day. Before school and after school, you can control those doors however you like. So there's electronic control on all these doors. The the main desk faces this direction. The concept is we take those desk components and rotate them this direction. Remove these two rooms that are detention rooms or testing rooms or storage rooms. They have lots of uses today. And this counseling office, so we can create the open office space oriented in this direction. So everybody comes in, passed across in front of here. The next level of security is to provide this, the school resource officer office right behind the desk with a large window on this wall. So they basically, if they're in the office, and I'll list in the office, but in the office, they have the ability to supervise any traffic in and out. So we need that to recreate the counseling office and those two testing rooms, detention rooms used. So those rooms that were here and here and here are relocated to this location. And we're reusing a lot of the doors, we're putting some new hardware on and integrating obviously electronic technology into those. And adding a window where this display cabinet is right now. Based on the construction drawings, that display cabinet wasn't original, it was added. So removing that and putting windows here. And we're taking the frame that's over here, relocating it to this location. And taking the frame that's in the nurse's office that always has the curtain closed, I'm told, would be the window that we would use out of the resource officer's office. And then there are some other minor modifications here and there. But obviously, it starts to affect the ceiling and the flooring and the wall finish.
So are the present doors, are they going to be, do they still have to be buzzed to get in?
The buzz to get in basically is right here.
So all those other doors are going to be locked?
Yeah. So they'll be obviously still electronically controlled. But during the school day, everybody has has to come through the office and out this door.
So Kevin, could you on the right side list the rooms and point to them so they can see and tell them what they are? And so let's put that down the middle and on the right side, tell them what they are.
And this is the reception area.
Yep.
And the reception, this is behind the desk, that's in front of desk. It's pretty light, but I can't even see it from back there. School resource officer, principal, I believe that's a storage room. So restroom and storage, the district office, the district superintendent, the bookkeeper that was here has moved to here. Basically a swap of the resource officer. That restroom, staff restroom is there, the book assistant, the workroom, and then the nurse.
So did the storage room change?
This room?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. And bathroom, did that change?
No.
Okay. And what's the entrance and what's, there's the administrator's office and what's that closet? Or what's that number?
These two rooms?
No, to the right, next to the bathroom, right to the right of the bathroom.
The book, the bottom of the box.
This one right here?
Yeah. This is the same room, okay. Okay, let's go down to the left side then and explain that, please.
This is currently the resource officer's office. That will become bookkeeper. This is a storage room off of the workroom.
So the bookkeeper's office can't even get into, can't even go into the the office, like you're not going to make a passage way into that?
The way it's drawn.
No, the way it's drawn.
Why wouldn't you?
You know, why would you not put the bookkeeper where the storage is?
Or where it shows, yeah. Why wouldn't there be a pass through there?
Plus there'd be a good reason.
Because the two people in that office would be who? Who's in that office?
The bookkeeper. It would be Marsha.
No, 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 in the office before your room. So we have it within their area.
No, that area has.
Okay. But why couldn't there be a pass through to there?
You could put a door between the bookkeeper and superintendent's office.
We look at that possibility.
Or take that that storage area. I just don't understand why there wouldn't be access between an administrator and a bookkeeper. Where you would have to go all the way around.
Well, it would be nice to put the bookkeeper on an outside wall so they can put a window in for her since she bears so many hours a day. If you put the storage with the bookkeeping, just put both those. Yeah, add a window because you don't have a window in the storage room.
This room here?
Yeah.
So then.
We have shown all windows.
Okay, I can get a little closer.
No, you have a show.
No. There are more windows out here than that.
So the nurse's station stays and then the teacher's workroom stays the same? Is that the workroom?
The teacher's workroom stays the same minus the storage space that they have and the items stored in there we come into the workroom.
And then we come into the bookroom.
Can we just make sure that the whole office staff or everyone who has an office in this area signs off on this design before it moves forward?
Absolutely.
Request that as a contingency for the contract?
Sure.
Kevin, what do you think, and obviously it's going to be a rough number, the cost savings were by including this with the onsite people as opposed to if we started in June last year so it can run into the school year?
Apparently, what I was estimating is between 15,000 and 18,000.
A saving though?
Obviously, there's a little higher contingency built into the budget as we know some of this. So there's some details to work out here.
What would you anticipate August 24th to September 15th to look like in that year? The last three weeks of the project?
Well, that's a large part of the construction period. So I mean, it's likely a significant impact. Yes.
To start the school.
The principal's office, the SRO, the district office space, the workroom, the nurse, those are all.
Maybe none of them you want.
Those those will be, you'll be able to use those. But the spaces, primarily this space, will be the one that's difficult to use.
So that during the last three weeks, I guess, what kind of security then do we have the first weeks of the school?
Well, we'll have to set something up temporarily.
So we still have detention rooms?
Be used for testing as well as detention potentially, but more testing rooms, small reading rooms, storage.
Right to you. So again, a lot of.
So it's the principal's room, the present principal's room?
The current use of the rooms are listed here and the new are here. So this is the same.
I just think it's a shame the bookkeeper has to go, doesn't have access to the or that. That just seems odd.
I think it's awful odd that you put the bookkeeper in a room that's four walls instead of like on an outside wall so that she can have a window. Especially when you especially when you've got a storage room that's there, it's stupid.
Right, and that office should be, yeah, and that office should be put up. And that whole bookkeeper.
The tree office was desired to bring the SRO up. And that was the best scenario we've seen. The question is how do you bring the SRO up and maintain the bookkeeper if that's possible?
So when you put it in a space, something has to get in there.
Storage.
That kind of sense to me.
Why I'm sleeping. What do I? Well, the storage room is is smaller than the current than the proposed bookkeeper's office. So it'd be a smaller room, but it'd be with a window, actually.
Marsha here?
Yeah.
Marsha?
Would you like a smaller room with a window or would you like it, would you like?
Or would you like a closet with no windows?
I want a window. I'm claustrophobic. I happen to have a window.
I only have a window.
You're not in your office very much, so you don't need one.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to this contract contingent that all employees involved in the space approved of the final design, including all people.
I'll second that.
I have a time limit on that because they were planning on starting tomorrow.
Well, they can't start tomorrow.
I understand that, but every day that it takes for them to get started, it puts it further into the school year.
You have a time limit on that? You have a time limit on that?
No.
End of the week?
No, I mean, I, like Kevin said, he's got a lot of details to work out. I I consider this a detail, you know, moving a door and a window and changing rooms around. I don't think I don't think it will be a huge delay unless you disagree.
We'll talk in the step one.
We have Mason's onsite right now. We have people doing flashy work onsite right now. So it's really the perfect time to do it. Because all the people that are going to be doing that work, they are onsite. Working on the roof, protecting the area, sealing.
So is that storage room that's with the, with you two, do you use that storage room? Oh, it's, that's the vault. That's the vault, okay.
And it's really small.
So how will we know, how, who will let us know that it's all redone?
Let me handle that.
Okay, thanks, Luke.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
The hard construction cost is 170,000. There's an 18,000 contingency. There's about 12,500 in design. About half of that's been invested. There's a $10,000 construction administration fee.
So after 150?
147.
And it's 147, maybe two, and that that includes the 60, right?
It includes everything.
So is the contingency, is that something that may, it may go over, we may use it, we may not, or?
It's a very high percentage. I expect. Normally, we wouldn't have that high of a percentage of contingency, but because of the very aggressive schedule, we want to make sure we cover every detail, like adding a window.
Yeah, okay. So do we have, do we have anything on this one that you have to be done by? Does he not, did we put that out there?
But that's a great idea.
This says mid-September, so if you want to make a motion, so.
And now our completion is mid-September.
Like a penalty, a financial penalty coming in?
Well, and that's just my question is whether we put that on there, but if there's not.
Right.
In order what? It's just going to be a piece of paper. And that's, I think this is a great project. I'm going to support it now because I think there's probably another time that our counselor is busier in the beginning of the school year. And that's one of the impacted offices. And my concern is what it does to the first students of school. I will strongly support it.
Certainly, and it is available in the building for our company.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I I'll be content with that. That's just my my concern.
So the, does the design fee increase now that everybody's going to change their mind? I think, okay.
This is just. No, it doesn't. We expect it to be some.
Put an end on it. Is this a penalty?
No.
So the first set of doors there, Kevin, will be unlocked.
It's like a, you'd already have a little.
Correct.
We'll be into the middle aisle.
So these three exist.
Some of you are going to different job sites or something.
You're closing them in there. That's fine.
Or the trades, I mean, if you need a trade, you might want to make a, most, something to wait for change.
But they're not going to organize replays here in a day or two. And they'd be, they'd just sort of.
Yeah, the guys are here on there.
If the morning's even, they'll do it in the. Let me have glass of all of the.
Here is glass.
That's glass.
We're taking this glass. Taking this wall of glasses right there to move it to there.
Yes.
That's the plan right now.
How much is it like shattered proof, bulletproof?
We don't have any bulletproof. We do not have any bulletproof glasses. It's all tempered glass. It has to be tempered glass at that elevation. So you can't kick it without a significant amount of force to break through. But it is not generally bulletproof if you want that. We have the contingency. It's very expensive.
I don't think we should.
The school safety grant will also do shattered proof film as part of our grant for that main entrance location. So I would imagine that second set of interior doors will have reinforced film on those windows. We may order them that way, I don't know.
And Jake, can I call a question?
Yes. Gunn?
Yes.
Gunna? Stappus?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
No.
Okay, now let's move on to the handbooks.
I don't have any idea what the CTO looks like for the first time. I just to replace this area. There.
Four to.
Where the SRO is being applied, practice is ready. When I, I'm writing, I'm not supported this project, the project. It's very uncertain means of school session.
Okay, what do we have? These principals here can take, highlight any large changes. The first on the agenda is the elementary handbook. Matt, can you walk us through, other than the editorial revisions of staffing changes and year updates?
Right.
Any significant changes?
No significant changes. Beyond staffing. There was one on attendance. We just added the language, multiple tardies may also be counted as an excused absence if they become excessive.
And what's excessive, what's that number?
We don't have a specific number on it, we just.
How parents know?
We communicate with them if it becomes excessive, we just say, help them. But we don't, I don't want to attach a number to it just because then you kind of hold hell to that in special circumstances where we would not want it.
Hold them accountable for that?
Right. So we just want to keep it kind of loose, but have just a little bit more language on that.
What have, what my concern on that is, is that if it's not specific, and if it is specific, you can still give leeway on that, but if there's a specific number, then that's a number for all students. You know, that the language is there for parents to understand that this is what's happened and that number's there. And then if, if there's something that happens, then you can, can talk about that. I'm about everyone having the same language, everyone understanding that same language and a number is a language that everyone would have.
I think that was really just about it, just.
Is there any language in here on social media?
Not on, on the whole handbook, no change, no.
Okay, where is the social media? Or you have that in, in how it's used and what's, what happens if it's misused?
Oh, acceptable use policy?
Pardon?
The acceptable use policy, that we refer to.
No, I'm asking you.
Are you referring to the acceptable use policy? That would be under school rules on page twenty-four.
Yep, I got that. And it is.
Yeah, this was approved last year.
Is this attached to any, this is also attached to a, a legal law, like a state mandate or a federal law? Is anything attached to that?
We don't list any of that. There is COPA, which is the Child Online Protective Privacy Act, and then there's FERPA, which is the sharing of information. I think you're referring to COPA.
Okay.
But we do not attach that to this handbook, no.
Okay, is that something that would be beneficial?
We could.
Why would, why wouldn't we do it?
At the elementary level, we just don't have a lot of that going on, I guess. So it's just not as relevant in our age. I get very few, if any, referrals on that kind of thing. And I think that's it.
So my question is, would those laws protect the district or protect the student?
I'm not an expert on it, I couldn't tell you for sure. There was some change in the medical language regarding allergies, food, medication, environmental triggers, prescription medicine as well. Page thirty-six. Yep, thank you.
I'm just trying to be proactive on those things and, and being realistic.
We can reference.
I think it's a reality thing that, you know.
Kelly, if you go to, shoot, page thirty of it.
Yep.
Under unacceptable use.
Yeah.
Talks about all the unacceptable ways to use.
Yep, I understand that.
Oh, okay. And then there's consequences.
Yep, I understand that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And we have to man explain, okay?
No, I'm sorry. We can look at the, we can look at the federal, I guess, guidelines and acts for the next year. And if there's anything we need to include for the elementary level, we'll consider it. Like I said, we haven't had any real issues, big issues at that level.
Every student has to sign an acceptable use policy?
Well, I understand. I'm just trying to protect the district and also the student and make it clear how usage.
Why would, if they're signing that, that would make it?
No, I don't think so. I think that it's being the year people, parents start.
Kelly, can you, if there's a, just, man, we do have.
That's okay.
Civil harassment and sexual harassment policies as a district, which are, which are tied into our handbooks.
I'll have questions about that, maybe to that.
I would say also too, if there's a focus on the use of social media and online active learning activities, that again supports the library, the special position even more because she does go over a lot of that included in her instruction when integrating technology, that's, that's a major component to that, so.
And to be clear, this, this covers school distributed devices and devices brought into the school.
Correct.
It says nothing about what a fourth grader does on his personal computer.
Correct.
Just services on the same page.
High school student handbook, that would include the physical activity. Middle school handbook's the last attachment.
Okay, Vicki, what do you have for middle school?
What are we talking about? Middle school? The only update that I have in the middle school handbook is about providing a doctor's note for any appointment and if a student is absent for three consecutive school days due to an illness, a doctor's note is required. Most kids will bring one in, but we, we never, we request it, but we never had it spelled out in the handbook.
Okay. Mitch, for high school? Do you have any questions?
I have the same questions, Vicki, that I have for that. If I didn't ask these questions, then I wouldn't be a responsible board member, or a parent, or a community member.
Yes.
I think, I think that we have to make sure that we're protecting ourselves and we're making sure that students are clear on what's going on, or what's happening, or, and I think.
I totally agree with you, yes.
And so can, can we look at what other schools are doing or what? We had a really good meeting one night here that a lot of parents did not attend, so about eleven people showed up, didn't anyone show up for that meeting when they were talking about sexual predators and, and that's alarming.
The video when they had the federal department here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, everyone has, understands the language and that we're protecting ourselves in the district. And I think that's really important.
If you have a copy of the high school handbook, inside the front cover, the Wednesday schedule, staff request was to put an RTI at the end of the day on Wednesday, so our Wednesday bell schedule will be changing. The length of the school day is not changing, we're still going till two o'clock, but it's adding another opportunity for an access or an RTI block of time. Apologize if the pages aren't numbered, so on the bottom of the second full page where it says graduation requirements, there've been some questions asked. So Amanda Eisner from the option school, myself, Mr. Paul Scale, the guidance counselor, Mr. Francois, the superintendent, sat down and talked about participation at graduation. Some students are not our students out at the option school, some students become our students out at the option school. When would they be able to participate in our graduation ceremony? So there are some additional requirements when they're enrolled in the, in our school and become our student plays a part into when they would be able to participate in the graduation requirement, credits earned. So there's some changes there. The next change is an editorial change under the National Honor Society. That would be the fourth page, eligibility for extracurricular, co-curricular activities, National Honor Society. In the handbook, it was a three point six oh, the National Honor Society requirement is a three point six five, four minor point. And again, that is the highest requirement in the area. The national requirement's a three point oh, so we still hold our students to a high standard. And every year, the last three years, I think we've had some of the largest groups of students qualify for and be inducted into the National Honor Society. The next change that I have, well, it must be summer because I'm talking about the two ten plan once again. Every year, senior attendance is the best it ever is in the fourth nine weeks. And if you ask yourself why, I'll tell you. It's the two ten plan, and parents love the two ten plan. I don't have to argue with my student, you want to take finals or not? Yes or no? If you don't want to take finals, go to school. Get to school, get there on time, do what you're supposed to do. In the past, it had been for all students several years ago, it was only for the seniors. I didn't bring, I have the form on my desk, I was not in my office today for the majority of the day, so I apologize for not grabbing it to bring it here. But attendance rates tend to fall off once we get through the winter and it gets nice out again. Got to take finals, what difference does it make? If I'm at school, it's a pretty nice day. I've heard excuses from, hey, my cousin's moving home from La Crosse and they need some help, I got to take finals. I'm taking off tomorrow, it's supposed to be a nice day. I would rather have students in school doing what they need to do. Two years ago, we had a gas leak and sent everybody home during final exams. This year, you know, I can't say that happens every year, but this year, let's see, we had baseball, track, trap, softball, golf, going on. Kids needing to take finals at different times, reschedule, make adjustments, teachers having to have finals prepared a week in advance, a week late, kids coming after school, the final, last day of school was over. So I'm asking that we put the two ten plaque back in for all students in the fourth nine Kelly, you asked about computer usage. On the very next page, under general regulations, talks about communication, the use of communication devices on school property. And disciplinary steps.
Is social media specifically noted in that?
Social media is not noted in my handbook. All students complete a digital driver's license in order to use technology here onsite. There are warnings posted, especially by law, on the locker rooms and restrooms about the use of electronic devices used in those locations. There are consequences on the next page about using devices.
On school time and then using it off school time inappropriately?
Correct. And there's, if they're using.
Is their language?
If they're using school MacBook, the school issued MacBook.
No, I'm talking about personal?
I, I don't have control over what somebody does at home.
No, 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 that's not what I said.
You said off of school site.
I said use on school site, they're using their personal thing on school site and then doing what they want to do with it off school site. Inappropriate usage on school site.
Yes, that, that's referenced in, that's already referenced in the handbook.
Specifically? Are there any state statutes?
We do not have them listed.
Okay. If you want me to seek out legal counsel and find out if that's wise, I will, but also you could also do that. I think we are not protecting ourselves as a district by not having that listed. I think we are naive. I think we are really naive about all of this.
And the last thing I would point out is on the second to the last page, under the subtitle, procedures for reporting, we have also implemented a safe schools alert system, and that's actually in all of our buildings. We reference it in our handbook, which is found on the district website, people can report an incident via text, email, web, or by phone, they can do it anonymously, they can attach their name to it. So we have included that information in our handbook as well.
Quick question. With the two ten plan, I get senioritis for seniors, that makes sense to me. But I'm thinking of a freshman who's maybe struggling in science in the second semester, and how does it, do teachers have alternate ways to assess mastery of the content without having them take a finals, finals exam? And how is a kid going to get a, you know, say he's got a six, say he's got a C midsemester without a finals exam, what are, what's available for a student to bring that C up to a B or an A? So I'd love to hear that.
I've got high school staff members here.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of us do the redo, retake policy, begin with. So if a kid really wants to increase their score, they have all semester to do so. And usually, I mean, it's a process to get through it, I mean, it's not like it's, you hear, take one test and then you don't do well, take the next, no. It's a week-long process where they have to come in and get help, do extra work, and then they can take a different version of that.
Okay.
In order to show mastery of that content.
Okay.
And I would argue, as science teachers, we've talked about this too, with the whole two ten plan. So if a kid's not kicked off a two ten and they want to do better, that'll take the final, it can only help them. Do it as a, it can only help them.
They can still take it, they just don't have to.
Right.
So if they got a C and they want to improve, you'll be absolutely.
They can.
They have the option to stay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And just to speak to that struggling freshman students, if they're not feeling real well that fourth quarter, they're probably more likely to come, would be instructing them and helping them during RTI, knowing that if they don't, they're going to have to take the final. We've seen big differences with the attendance. So I would highly encourage the two ten back in place for all.
For all students, yeah.
And that's a, all the high school staff supports that.
Does high school staff support that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they take it the first semester, so everybody is required first semester, they, everyone takes it. So they have the experience.
It's beneficial for everyone.
And they have.
Is that what you're saying?
I think that experience in first semester. You know, I mean, I, don't you think, you'd simply say, go to college knowing this is what a final's like?
Right.
So we do do that in January.
And that's good to know because I've had some comments from parents that do not want that for the whole school. They want that just for the senior.
I think.
But if the staff thinks it's beneficial.
In January, the January.
In January.
The end of the semester.
Yeah, the end of the semester.
First grader, sophomores, and juniors also like to be gone when it's nice off in the spring. You can hold that open and saying, hey, this is another tool to get you in my seat.
And there's nothing wrong with being held opponent back there. I mean, that's part of life.
And I think the nice thing about the way that we, our staff does, we give finals, everybody does it a little differently, so they get that full college experience where one class may do a comprehensive. So I mean, it might be a hundred and fifty question final, where in another class, it's a project.
Right.
Or in another class, so just like a college.
Well, it may, it may not just be college, I mean, that's just, you may have to show up for a job sometime and write a complete sentence.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, be accountable. I mean, it's just not for the college experience.
Is there a reason that we don't wait for some of our more advanced courses?
That has been a topic of conversation many times. I've been in conversations where, you know, if it's an AP class, an A is worth five points. If it's a, you know, if you get a B, it's worth a four point, also you're not penalizing the student. And colleges and universities don't necessarily look at that GPA as much as what is the class that you took? Are you taking the challenging and rigorous course offerings and challenging yourself? And if you do, the A isn't necessarily what's the important aspect. And if you do, the A isn't necessarily what's the important aspect of that. So we have kind of gone away from that. You know, it's always something that can come back and can be reviewed.
I don't like the A plus. I just don't. But I think that students that are taking calculus or, you know, advanced courses, physics, so forth, should get a little bit more credit for taking a harder class than me, who took a lot of art classes. And not that art is something important, I'm not saying that, but-
And art would have been my case. Because I can't draw stick figures, so.
I can't anymore, so. Okay. What do we have left?
It doesn't look like maybe the social studies change made it in here for graduation requirements.
Oh, because there was a new mandate by the state. There was a new state mandate, wasn't there?
Just adding four of- No, we talked about- Four of that EP course.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that must, that was an oversight. That will be, that is a card, that's in, yeah, that's in the course registration materials. It was in there, so I'll make sure that's-
Vicki, any changes in the athletic?
E-cigarettes and dapes were added to other tobacco products as a violation of the athletic code.
CBDO?
That would be under-
That's going through legislation right now. But it'd still be a tobacco product, so wouldn't get allowed in school.
What if it's prescribed?
What's that?
Want to be, some cases prescribed.
But it still wouldn't get allowed in schools. Unless they have a doctor's order and the school nurse.
So somebody want to make a motion to approve the handbook?
I'll make a motion.
Second down. So do all but high school, no school? All right. We have a motion, do we have a second? All right, all's in favor? Say aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm always hearing that flag one because it has that one little board in there from the WIA going on proving.
Oh, the one we put in from last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is that?
The one where the people get the pass because they're told.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay, so that's the five one?
Yes. Okay.
Five one on athletic technology.
Correct. And what are we, what are we opposed to for middle school, high school?
We're opposed to the 210 Plan as written. I don't know what kids are going to hate me for it. However, I think more exams are better.
Do you want to make a motion?
Motion to- I like the man. This is new to us.
I get it.
New today. A change, unless we read through it between Thursday and today. I'd like to have some time to get some feedback.
On the 210?
We have heard from teachers.
There's a lot of things- We're doing stuff all the time. The 210 Plan, I disagree with Larry. I think that the, I think it should be for the entire school. And it worked really well. It gives those kids in those classrooms-
I think it disappeared.
Yeah, I don't disagree. We got five handbooks on Thursday. I haven't had time to read all of them to not be able-
If you were in that position, would you go to school or would you skip out? Take a chance and say, I know, I know, I will go to school. That's my one.
Most kids are in the parents' control, so I want to be supposed to live by-
I understand. I was, I was different. So not all kids are, you know.
I was going to say, that's-
It was kind of-
Who listened to your parents, huh?
I did.
I did too.
That's all I got.
So we got high school, middle school, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Would it work? I would vote for the high school. The 210 Plan is still for just seniors. So I would, I would vote, I would vote for it.
Okay.
So I can make that motion? Go with that. I'll second that.
Think that were amended to for what?
To take the 210 Plan out for all students.
For seniors.
So you don't want it for all students? You vote, voting?
Yeah, correct. Okay, we're going to call a question on this one, Angie.
Who's second of that?
Uh, Larry did.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunham?
Tell me the question again.
So if you're in favor of the 210 for everybody, you would vote no?
No, and I'm voting no because I think policy 443.7 needs to be examined. Again, I'm just not comfortable with all of this information yet, so. I, I think we're naive on it and I think we need to further investigate it. How we protect ourselves and protect our students.
Steph?
Yes.
Bush?
Abstain.
Chambers?
No.
Besting?
No.
So the motion?
Three to one. Okay. Let's move into-
We still have to. No, we just, we did not approve that. The motion is a creep.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we need another.
Sorry, I just saw.
Okay, so we need another motion. So do you want to make a motion, Kelly?
Which one?
To approve it as, as with the 210 Plan.
I don't think I can make that motion because I'm going to say the same thing as what-
You can certainly have a motion and you can vote against it.
Okay, I made a motion that we need to include the 210 Plan for the whole school.
Do we have a second?
Did I say it right?
So we're just doing high school again?
Basically, it's to approve as is.
As is.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's have a roll on that thing.
Dunham?
I'm going to say no, not because of the 210 Plan, I'm saying no because of policy 443.7.
Steph? Bush?
Abstain.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
And Best?
Yes. Why are you abstaining, Angie?
I'd like a chance to review that.
All right, let's table it all.
We had bad issues with that one before. I mean, it proves that for two minutes and found it here.
Okay, good call, so that one will table.
What about that? Kelly, can, is it possible to request a legal opinion on Kelly's concerns for that handbook to make sure that her concerns are addressed? Which I think our district is protected.
I think it's a violation of social media. You can clarify that.
Yes, and, and I just want to make sure that we use the specific language and scenarios because I think that can be interpreted, you know, by administration differently. And I think these, do you know? Does that make sense, Ward?
Yeah. Are you comfortable with the policy as it is?
I don't think it will entirely allow that message.
Okay. Does it, I just, I just feel- Figure issue of just dealing with the policy first and getting that straight before the handbook mirrors the policy?
Right, right, right. Does that make sense?
And then maybe we vet this in-
I think it'll make it. Can we table for ours?
Okay. I want to make a motion to accept Katie's resignation.
So you can make it clear that I want policy 443.7 in a handbook to kind of mirror each other and make sure that those, that language agrees. So that's what we're, that's why I'm saying no to the handbooks, the high school and the middle schools because of, because of, I want to make sure.
Do you have a copy of that acceptable use policy that parents and students sign? You don't have that handy, do you?
No, no. But there's other, there's other concerns, baby. There's, there's other concerns that I have that, that if I get some answers, I'll be okay with, okay?
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to accept Katie's resignation, all's in favor? Anybody opposed? It was Larry's motion and in second. Somebody want to make a motion to accept Allison's petition for-
Speech and language.
Speech and language, thank you.
I'll make a motion. Don't we accept Allison's, Allison's position? Do we have a second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Somebody else need a time and a break? Before we go into the street?
So are we still wanting to convene classes? Are we tailoring that power?
Well, okay.
Okay, that's all right, we can-
So I'm going to go do that. You guys can start deciding then on the fifth grade teacher.
Is that what, what if?
That's the hour.
That's the next? Oh, okay, good.
Approval of the message, hiring a fifth grade teacher.
So just to present this, this position is still in the motion?
Correct. And we have, what's the class coming in, 62 in 15th? Do you know the-
60, I believe.
I'm going to tell you my concern with having a new position. We already have a new person in fifth grade. Is that correct, a new teacher?
Yes, that's correct.
And, hi.
Hi.
And then we have one who wanted to leave, right? Or one-
Transferred.
Transferred, right? So what would happen is that we have one seasoned teacher with two new hires. And I'm concerned about that. That's my main thing. We never had a question of not filling this position. There were other concerns, at least that I had. But my, I'll tell you my concern, that's my concern. Two newbies with one.
Looking at the weekend candidate pool so far who have applied, we have several experienced educators, and that's something we will consider when we do, if we were to do interviews. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily be a brand-new teacher. They might be coming from a position in another district. But that would be just one factor in how you would make that hire.
Should we make a decision?
Make a motion to fill the fifth grade, make a decision.
Yeah. Do you want to make a motion?
Or discussion?
Or discussion? Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, discuss. I don't think any, any of the teachers in the building are going to let, even if it was a new teacher, they're going to let them hold the high, especially with one of the other fifth-grade teachers still in the building.
So this is my, this would be, this is my personal opinion after listening to everyone. I'm concerned about budget. I, the three teachers should be in fifth grade and three should be in kindergarten. And that the library position for one, for one year, be managed by Chris, who is a co-recipient, very knowledgeable, skillful, and she managed both libraries.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'll write your letter, sure. Can she weigh in?
Sure. Thank you for your trust in that ability. It's, but we are going to take a major step backwards if we go down that route. You cannot be in the classroom and work with students and teachers the way that you can if you have a 6 through 12 person and a pre-K through fifth grade person. In addition, there are so many behind-the-scenes jobs. Kelly, when you're talking about acceptable use, then a lot of those discussions and things are, are what we work on when we do have a break. And I don't, if, if, any teacher wants to, like, you can't do either well. And, and with the budget concerns, when we talk about budget, if you cut this position this year, next year you are not going to come back and say it was a one-year thing. You're going to say we muddled through. And I, I want you to know that districts are watching around the state. I've had people reaching out to me, very concerned because other districts have started to follow our model and add library, add a, they cut the position so there was one person. I believe originally, Mary Point had three to five librarians, wasn't it? Wasn't there a time when there was like one in the middle school, one in the eighth grade? Years and years.
Two.
Years and years ago. But anyway, but my point is, what, what we're seeing now is other districts are following us in that they have the K through 12 model and have gone, now they are having an elementary person in the middle, or depending on their numbers and enrollment. And there's just, so it, it just, it does not serve students well. And this position has contact with every single student in your building.
And Mrs. McCoy is in our class. She's not just in here. Like, we're fighting to get her into our rooms. I mean, it's a battle, like, science wants her. I, you know, I mean, it's so mu, I mean, it helps so much to have, like, one of my freshman class, I had 28 kids in there this year. There were 28 kids, and I didn't even have enough desks. So it was huge when we were working on things that I, I could grab her when she wasn't.
An example of, also, like, we do an info-lit class with our freshman English, which Kristen and I co-teach as information literacy skills. This year, we were going on the drawing board. We have plans to meet through August and add a whole component of media literacy, which just crosses, it's just literacy across the board. And you have those multiple literacies listed in the strategic plan. I, I just can't advocate enough how damaging it's going to be for the quality of our program if we cut that position. And I still have a job, so I'm not even advocating, it's not me advocating for my job, it's me advocating for your kids and your students and the people in the district and our students. You can't do it while you're spread so thin.
In the, the last two years, we had to use Chris-
In the, the last two years, we had to use Chris because of that big class going through, which is now going to be freshmen. She did a reading class and reading intervention. Mrs. Riley is on maternity leave all through, I believe, September. And my thought was to have Chris run the reading intervention, you know, in her absence. And if she's, she's going between both buildings and have to manage both, I, that's not going to happen. And I, I mean, Lord help the kids if I have to run the reading intervention. I mean, so that was planted in my head that I was, I was looking at, so.
Thanks, Chris. There's nothing wrong with advocating. Everyone just heard you. That's a great thing.
Okay. I feel so passionately about it and I, and we're on, we are growing like this and I feel both our program and our district are continuing that the new things are going to...
And everyone just turned around.
Are you watching?
Yes.
That's a really great decision.
Decision.
And Dr. Dunn, second. Any other discussion?
Angie, may I call a question?
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunla?
Yes.
Steffes?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Okay. Elementary library position. Do you want to make a motion?
I'm with it. Will you approve the position 1.0 FTE?
Second here.
There's another person here, I saw you on court time.
Just paid. There's somebody that expressed interest in, in supporting the position in any way possible.
But was it licensed?
Correct. But has a lot of, um, doesn't she have a lot of experience or something? She is, she is accurate.
She's pretty natural. I, I think it's...
Jen, if we have a motion, we should second it.
Okay. I'll second.
So my question was Kerry came without a license and she received a warrant, she was here?
That's correct.
You want to do that again?
I'd be okay with that.
Kerry held a teacher's license.
Yeah, you have to have a teacher certification. You cannot be a library media specialist without being a certified teacher.
Right. But I mean, but to...
And, and to have somebody under emergency licensure who is working towards that, that's how I started as well. And it's actually a fairly dynamic way to go if you cannot find a licensed person because our classrooms become the laboratories of all your professional learning that you're doing, or our school. And that's how great and things get and for, it's a, a good start.
I, I will advocate posting this a weekend and getting, in this late game, though, getting a wide pool of candidates as possible and, you know, just like we are with a fifth grade position, um, you know, just following that process. And I, it's a, truly, it's a teaching position, as Chris has talked about, to, I just, that's not a position you want, I believe, to, it's a very specialized position. And that's why I communicated to the board, I'm not seeing a shift from a classroom teacher to library, just because it's, it takes a special skill set and a person's really interested in it, I just want to make sure we, uh, we get the best we can.
Anything else?
Can you refresh our memories or, or what are all the responsibilities with the students?
With the students? So at the elementary level, she runs the library, she works with Linda, provides the curriculum, works with Linda about, you know, which books to read aloud, for example. So Linda manages the checking in, checking out, reading aloud for kids. Linda has her own block, so she works with Linda. All of the literacies, we talked about, you know, social media, used media literacy, global literacy, digital literacy, she is at the front line on that, teaching every class once a week. She's part of that life skills block. So you have counseling, then you have library time, where it's checkout time, then you have instructional technology, and then you have a more of an independent learning time. So Kerry, library position, did the technology, but she also facilitated a lot of that independent learning experiences. I know Lori, you can probably speak to that. Sorry to put you on the spot. I know Kerry kept it work closely with the fifth grade team, with Judy and Lori. Just on getting kids how to use some of the Google products and how to connect with the kids in Europe was one of her projects. And she helped a lot of that as well. So, um, just kind of our teacher for the 21st century, you could say. It's, the position's really more in the last twenty years, I would say. Right, Chris?
Yeah, I would agree. It's also a person who is a troubleshooter.
Yeah.
In the building, you know, we, we outsource our technology support. So frequently I or Kerry were called, something's not working or it's a coaching position. Um, you know, I totally appreciated, I worked with Brooke when I, as a literacy coach, and we do the same thing with teachers. We go in the classroom, you want to try a new tool with kids, let me be there, let's have two hands. It really lets us group kids or have small groups or personalized learning opportunities and...
When, not to interrupt, but when, when Kerry goes and teaches technology, she's not just teaching the kids. The teachers have an opportunity to watch her work with the technology. So it's kind of has a two, has a double impact because when the teachers have seen how to use it and they start to feel more comfortable, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but when I saw her working and I could see the teachers working alongside her many times. So it almost act as an underdog coach, but just coming from a school that did not have a librarian to one that did, it's just night and day.
I think we need to emphasize the word technology, not just librarian.
Yeah, the technology.
It's library media specialist now, I think.
Yeah, actually, yeah, our job title now is library media technology specialist. So, that's...
We can phrase that, posting that, we will post it that way.
I think we need to emphasize that, not just, I mean, just for the public to understand.
Yeah. But I think you have a policy in the handbook, right? But where it really matters is how it's being taught in the classroom. And the policy will take care of itself many times because you have that proactive approach to it.
Was this the position in the budget?
It was, it was removed from the budget on the board. So the number two is really correct.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I just want, I just want to say, I mean, I, with our current savings, we can afford this position this year. You know, I know that our saving, I know we're not going to get a lot of money next year, but, you know, if, if we go to an operational referendum and we lose that and this goes back on the chopping block, so be it, but I think we can afford it this year. Plus, I, I just think that this is, this is not a place to make a cut.
With the way everything's going, technology-wise?
Right. This is, this is the glue position of this school, it seems like, especially with regards to technology and even cutting edge of learning.
Then I just want to stress again that we would have that money if we did not have school vouchers.
Angie, call a question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunla?
Yes.
Steffes?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes. Going through the business service stuff. Credit card statement.
Just curious, why are you still, she has a card. That was my biggest question. It was just, it was just like, just moving it.
Motion for credit card statement. Okay, let's do all three together. Not wait, yes, that's four. Dr. Dunn, and who's going to second that? Discuss. Okay, board's open.
So that'd be the credit card statement, two accounts together. One and two make up three different approvals.
It's possible. This is the first one I'm viable, but I would stick it. I have descriptions on the credit card.
I wasn't, I wasn't here.
Okay, yeah, I just...
I didn't came this month.
No problem. Just apply.
It's your Jimmy's.
I, I tried, I tried to.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, great. That makes a lot of difference.
So Angie, drop the ball. That's, that's all.
We're concerned about whether we're on budget or behind budget or ahead of budget. You know, with these last, not available. Are we looking to make up for it instead or for this year?
No. Yeah, it looks very favorable and that's part of the approval of the Fund 46 transfer that we actually have in the fund available at the end of the year that we can decide how we want to disperse. So it came out more favorable than what we thought. We certainly tightened our belt and, and with very fiscal responsibility without any excessive wants and tried to stay within the needs and we still have surplus at the end of the year.
That's the hundred K quote you quoted earlier, correct?
Uh, that's, that's for next year's budget. So this particular budget, Marsher, according to earlier this week, it was close to roughly committing about a hundred thousand to Fund 46, a hundred seventeen thousand to Fund Balance, two seventeen total at the end of this year is available at this time.
Okay, one seventeen to Fund Balance and Fund 46, remind me again.
So the total amount at the end of the year that wasn't expended in our full twelve million dollar budget was two hundred seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
So that's what we have left at the end of the year, decides we want to put it all in the fund in balance, part of it in the Fund Balance, part of it in the Fund 46.
And 46 is what?
Is the capital maintenance fund that we created that is that long-term trust. We can't use it for five years. We're probably at three right now, we're aiming at four. So we have to wait to be able to use those funds. But anything that we put in that is an attributable expense versus being put in the Fund Balance is not an attributable expense.
Okay.
Thank you. It's a lot.
How much do we have?
Good question. You put in three different, two hundred seventeen million and, two hundred twenty-five, I think? So roughly about forty thousand.
So hypothetically, each couple of years, if the referendum's like passed, we take that half a million dollars and put it on the note?
You could pay it down.
Pay that down.
I'll go check. I assume that you can use it for, because it's a bond question.
Can you pay down a note?
Can we pay down a note? Or whatever I know would go. If we go to referendum and it passes, then for years, we would have a half million dollar sitting. It'd be kind of silly.
Certainly, towards that period, I'd probably say, we're on the pressure to do a bigger project. Wouldn't I hate to see this do now?
Well, it would, it would get rid of your referendum a lot quicker.
I look...
Pay it down because it would all be principal at that point. That would make a heck of a...
It was future planning, but the reason was set up.
Yeah, I know. Because we, unfortunately had to do most of this stuff now for us.
We're showing a surplus of two seventeen, including the, the TIF refund?
No. So that is at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th of 2018, the, the payment that'll be coming for the TIF will be in the eighteen, nineteen school year budget. So that's sort of supposed to be in next year's budget.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
So this was for credit card, bills payable and budget amendments?
No, not the budget amendment.
Not the budget.
Just the two bills, the two budget amendments, sorry, two accounts payable. The accounts, additional accounts.
Oh, not credit card?
Credit card, accounts payable and additional.
Oh, okay. Additional. Okay.
No, just, just call a question.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunla?
Yes.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Okay, budget. I'll put more budget amendments.
Usually our school districts amend their budgets to, to show at the end of the year that money transferred between funds to take care of negative accounts. Sometimes DPI has a rule that says you can't carry a fund over in a, in a negative way and/or there's just over expenditures in one area and under expenditures in another. So this helps to balance those budgets out by making those amendments. They're oftentimes recommended by the auditor to do so so that books look clean and the money is there rather than showing negative balances and surpluses. Marsher did create this actually for our last meeting, unfortunately didn't make the agenda. And so nothing has changed from the last one to this one. It is part of our final fiscal, closing of the fiscal year. And so as you look at the amendments, it shows the, the location of where the expense is coming from and where it's being amended to. And all of these numbers zero out, so you see eighty thousand, three hundred dollars worth of accounts that have been amended to other accounts that were under or just basically the transfer between funds. DPI does allow inter-fund transfers between the same codes, but if you try to go across the code because the board approved the budget, you have to then amend it officially back to the board. So where you see the expenditures are moving across the budget line item, it must have board approval to do so. Ted recommend?
I have a motion. Angie, give me one second. I'll second.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunla?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Okay, just, I need a motion to go into closed session to review and evaluate superintendent candidate.
Do you have one more, Angie, approval of Fund 46 transfer?
I'm really off. Sorry. Okay, I need a, a motion to approve Fund 46 transfer.
I'm in motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Let's be clear. I'm not in motion.
Hundred thousand to Fund 46 and a hundred seventeen thousand sixty eight Fund Balance. Angie, may I call a question, please?
Four hundred fifteen thousand, yeah, for capital.
Or areas of...
Hundred ten one forty six, this is for Fund Balance, this is for replenishment. We had nothing to learn, because we're not allowed to...
Or other, other order is directed by the board.
Oh.
Okay. So I think you give us some flexibility.
So as you prove the final budget, the one hundred needs to be locked into Fund 46 by month's end.
Okay.
And once that's locked in, you can't touch the Fund 46, but it's got to be posted before July 31st. That money then is a long-term trust and it will stay there until we're able to assess it for capital projects only. The one seventeen, and there, here's some options for the board, you could put all two seventeen into Fund 46, or you could put all two seventeen into Fund Balance and use it for projects today. What we're recommending here today is kind of splitting those two up and using some in a long-term trust and a one seventeen in the Fund Balance and then utilizing Fund Balance for a lot of different things. Again, this came out before the TIF money, so we've got additional money beyond this, but you could use it for capital maintenance, capital projects, putting staffing back in. Any of the things that we've reduced over the last few months that you want to build back in, a budget around?
And we had discussed if there was no surplus at the end of this fiscal year, that approved project would have to be on Fund Balance.
Right. So the unfunded portion of the school safety budget, the bunch could come from this amount as well.
Chair of Operations.
Chair of Operations.
We should schedule a meeting.
You do need to commit Fund 46 tonight if you're going to do so.
No problem.
And then the rest of the one seventeen, if that's the number you choose, can be decided later.
Okay, let's call a question.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunla?
Yes.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Okay. Now can I have a motion to go into closed session to review and evaluate?
I will make that motion.
Do we have all those in favor?
Who seconded it?
Okay, do we have a motion to go back into open session?
A motion to go back to open session.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody to vote? Okay, Carrie. Okay, I'm looking for our motion on the table.
I can do it. Okay, first motion is to extend Moos' tenure in superintendent position till the end of August.
Dunn's motion is extended?
Extended from the expiration date of July twenty-fifth to the end of August.
July thirtieth?
Yeah, it was July...
Was it July thirtieth?
Yeah, July thirtieth, August thirty-first. And when is, what, what's the August date?
August thirty-first. And do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Angie, would you call a question, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunlop?
Yes.
Stephens?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
We have a second motion that we are going to entertain.
Okay. Second motion is to offer a one-year interim superintendent position to Mitch Brinright pending negotiations regarding duties and compensation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
And more discussion? Angie, would you call a question, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dunlop?
No.
Stephens?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
What's your carry for it, too? Business is there?
No other business.
We have a motion to a burn.
Motion to a judge.
Anybody to jump? We need power. Thank you, everybody.